I'm old.
Were you doing things without us knowing about Sam?
It's because I'm old.
You were grumpy Friday.
Do you have a Friday?
Okay, we're gonna call a meeting. The order is Tuesday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do you have any notes and reports to see?
No, not today.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings.
It's kind of the end of the month. I don't have a whole lot this week. There's a perfect pairings fundraiser. Thursday night at Capitol Plaza for a special learning center, so be participating in that. And then Friday, football starts, so good luck to all our local teams. Monday's holiday, so if you have anything for the agenda, we need to get it in early Friday.
Yes.
I think that's it.
Tomorrow I have a meeting with Juvenile, maybe AA Arctic Tax Alliance.
That's next week.
Oh, it's next week. Well, but this is just somebody wanting to look at the location.
Oh, okay.
One of the dinners, or that, yeah, the other one start next week. And then I got a mid-mall Regional Planning Commission meeting tomorrow in Ashland. Football starts on Thursday.
Yeah.
I guess it has to start Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I don't have much either. Tonight, West Virginia State. I'm meeting with them Wednesday night. Jeff Sidon Collector's Guild has their meeting. Friday, I have a National Guard meeting on my nine eleven program that I'm putting on, and that is all I have. Commissioner comments. We're gonna do our unfinished business first. Discussion of certain courts budget for twenty twenty-five, and then discussion of, yeah, that's it.
I think we're really down to what the juvenile court administrator, juvenile officer is to my understanding. I wasn't here last week, but I think that the resolution that Harry came to getting us from the baseline through the shift differential, at this point, if there's nothing else to argue about, that's, we're good with that.
Well, I don't know if these gentlemen, because we really can't sit and talk without inviting the whole world, so I'm not sure what they know at this point.
Well, I mean, last week, and I apologize for not being able to be here, I think the discussion of where we propose juvenile to be based on DYS and basically the information that we get, which is the most comparable position. The statute, our obligation is to bring you a budget with comparables. That, and DYS has base salaries, but they also have shift differentials. And so, as I understood the discussion, Ms. Harry had said we could adjust two-thirds, he thought, two-thirds of the difference, because two-thirds of our shifts would be undifferential.
Yes, that's accurate, although I don't know if I was going the two-thirds of the way at last week's meeting or it was subsequent conversation with you, Toby, that like the day.
So I guess what I'm telling you is, is that if you can go to two-thirds number that Harry got to for the resolution, Harry got to, I think we can live with that. That's, that resolves.
I think that's where we were at last week.
Was it? Okay.
If I remember correctly.
Okay, I wasn't sure we got that deep into the weeds on, at this meeting, or it was a later phone call with Toby. Okay, so at the end of the day, we've almost responded with exactly what Juvenile has asked for with respect to those two positions. I think it's eight hundred and fifty dollars a year less. Does that sound right?
Eight hundred dollars less for the youth specialist one and five hundred less for the youth specialist two.
Okay, all right.
So what we're telling you is, is if we can get it all resolved, that's not worth fighting about.
All right, that's, that's where we are on that part of it. Then we had one other issue.
The last thing is juvenile court administrator.
Right.
And what we had done is we had looked at several different things, one of which is, and a little background, is there's four positions of Juvenile that we have combined because we thought we could do it, you know, give them the people and give them the responsibilities. So you've got the juvenile court administrator, who's got responsibility for the entire operation. You've got the juvenile officer, who's got responsibility for the court services side. You've got the program director, which is responsible for the non-secure detention side and the emergency placement, which allows us the hundred and thirty dollars a day as opposed to the fourteen something dollars a day. And then we have the detention supervisor. Currently, right now, we have the juvenile officer and the juvenile court administrator serving in the same position, or the same person doing both of those jobs. And we have the program manager and the detention superintendent doing the same job. So when you, when you start looking at comparables, the, and, and you can't do, I mean, it's not worth double the salaries because you can't work eighty hours a week. But when you look at the comparables, the best ones we have are in Boone County. You know, those, those detention officers and the juvenile officer over court services, you know, all make about seventy-six thousand dollars. Their court administrator, who is responsible for all of it, makes a hundred and seven thousand. So, you know, the other thing that we looked at was where we were in terms of everything else. We've worked really hard to get the salaries up for the line people in this business because we're one of the few twenty-four-seven care departments in the county. And so we looked at that. We looked at what it would take to make this position so we don't have the compression. We've got everybody else raised up, and then we've not asked for juvenile court administrator raises in the last couple of years other than the COLAs. And so that's how we got to the number that we have. Is an adjustment comparable to what we've done for everybody else that works over there. We've just not done it in the last couple of years. We've tried to do it in stages. We've talked about this before, and, you know, trying to eat the elephant in chunks. We've done that with other departments that are under the court supervision, but this is where we are on this one.
When the judge and I left the conversation yesterday, I told him I would make a motion. And we'll stay right on the, on the director's number yet. The number that has sort of been brought to us is ninety-eight, four twenty-five point zero eight. Is that?
Yes.
And I told the judge I hate pennies.
You hate pennies.
So, and I liked the round, so I'm, I'm gonna propose ninety-eight, five as a rounded number for that, for the director's salary. And then, I'm sorry.
No, we believe that to be comparable to other responsibilities and other comparable agencies. You know, I think that everybody forgets that we run a twenty-four-seven care organization. And we, we gotta run it differently than you run a jail, although there are days, I think, that's part of what we're doing.
And we already agreed on the other two classifications.
Yeah.
Yes.
You got the, yes.
Youth service one, youth service two, right? So I would propose we go that way with adopting the budget on circuit court.
I'm gonna go ahead and second. I'm not crazy about all the numbers, but we consider Debbie that up all day. We've already done that. Couple of weeks. I did want to, I did have a question on professional services for clarification. Did we leave that number at two ninety-two, five, and we changed how they would be billable and the hours billable? Or did we double it? So I think we have some question on that.
We raised, we raised the number. We think that when we change what's billable, we think that the number's gonna go up. We're probably gonna leave the rate in at the same until we see exactly what happens.
Okay, I think that's where my confusion was. We're leaving the rate the same, and that's fifty an hour?
Fifty dollars an hour.
But we're gonna increase the things that they can bill for, so it's doubling to two ninety-two, five?
Yes.
So, okay. Is that what you understood, Debbie?
Yeah.
Okay.
The total's just going up.
Because I think that's what you told me, and I didn't, I wasn't catching it that way. I was catching it as we were changing how they could bill on some things.
We had cranked it down probably tighter than I imagine that we had cranked it down with it. And when you're working with people who do only Juvenile, that was one problem. But, I mean, I got cases I cannot do because I don't have lawyers, and we're having to continue them. And so when you go to a lawyer, when you pull a lawyer out of a firm that's just gonna do a couple of cases, the way we bill drives them nuts. And while we think that what we did was fair, and at the end of the day, when you do the numbers, I think they're gonna come out closer, but that's why we proposed doing it that way. And then we can kind of watch where it is.
Jeff, their budget ask is, last year was one ninety-five, they're going to two ninety-two. So basically, they're asking for fifty percent more in budget, not, not double, not a hundred percent.
Okay, so we're going to the two ninety-two, five?
Yeah.
That's what they're asking for, yeah. Last year, they asked for one ninety-five, so.
Okay, last year.
It's like a fifty percent increase, not a, not a hundred percent increase.
We're adjusting the billable hours, so there will be, last year, there were three thousand nine hundred. This year, we've asked for five thousand eight hundred and fifty hours.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm fine. I think either way, I think the case loads over there and getting people to represent them and do it efficiently and try to get, you know, the cases cleaned up. Actually would save us money in the long run if we can get them cleaned up and get people there to represent it because when they show up and they don't have an attorney.
It serves, it serves the families better. The resolution is quicker. We can get to that sort of point there. But like I said, this is the first time, and I have done this longer than anybody. I think since Curtis is gone, I have done this longer than anybody. This is the first time we've had this significant issue in trying to get attorneys.
Well, that's, you're advocating for the parents right now. I'm just coming from, sure, from the, the budget side, so. And that's, that's what I'm saying. If we can maybe do something like that, it may help us in the long run and, you know, reduce some of the caseloads and get some of it taken care of. And then, you know, like, like you're doing absolutely, that advocates, advocates for the families themselves, so.
Well, the sooner, sooner we get going, the sooner we get out of these people's lives. We have done, I think, a yeoman's job in, in case management and getting stuff, you know, the people that don't have to be in court, we work with that, and it's, but it just, we gotta have lawyers, and, and, and we don't. So we appreciate that sort of support.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Let's, just a bit to make sure we're all on the same page. Ninety-eight, five is one number, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna, we will submit final budget number showing ninety-eight, five for that position. We will show.
Forty-four, three, is that the?
Forty-five, two, youth specialist one, forty-seven, five, youth specialist two.
Give me those numbers again.
Forty-five thousand two hundred for youth specialist one, forty-seven, five for youth specialist two.
All right. And these, these numbers are effective for ninety-eight, five starting January one, and they include whatever COLA the county rolls in there.
Right.
So that COLA doesn't add to this.
Right.
It's inside of this. Right?
Okay, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We will go back to our agenda. Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of CPI telecom sole source.
That needs to be tabled.
Approval of quote to purchase Caterpillar's one forty motor grader.
I got some handouts here if you need them. I did email the quote last night, so. This is a brand-new Caterpillar motor grader to replace the twenty thirteen model with eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three hours. The purchase price is three hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. And we do have to do an advanced purchase. This will be in next year's budget, like we've been doing on past equipment purchases in order to get them in the year we want to budget for them. We have to order ahead of time, so.
We did that before, a grader, so.
Yeah, so I have a quote here. We need approval of, of the purchase, and then I, I think Sam just signed a quote somewhere on here. It doesn't really have a signature on it, so. I think I pull out a sheet here.
Okay.
Careful. So is there a trade-in on this, or what are we doing?
Caterpillar used to do the buyback road around, and it was a set. You had it for so long or so many hours, and they bought it back. They quit that. It's been a while ago. We haven't done a buyback in probably over ten years, so. We will take our current, actually, we have one spare right now.
How many have we got total? Three?
Uh, we have five.
Five.
Four in regular use and then a spare.
Okay.
We'll surplus, we'll take the one that's, that one right there, put in, into the spare, and then surplus the other one. So we'll keep, we'll always keep a spare.
Okay. So then we should have some money coming back with that later on, too? Maybe not a substantial amount?
I think we sold the last one last year for about fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, they're pretty valuable. Even with that many hours, they're still valuable.
A lot of our surrounding counties really use, rely on road graders more than probably anything else. They've got a lot of travel.
Right. Yeah, so it, we'll, we'll get some decent surplus out of it.
I'll make a motion to proceed and order the FABIC CAD for three fifty-six, four fifteen point one four.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval and signing of annual renewal of WIC local agency nutrition services contract.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our annual contract with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the WIC contract. It does cover all the costs for the WIC staff, and recently, we've also been able to bill, like, in-kind services, like building, utilities, phones, and I think this year, Melinda was even able to bill some of my salary because of the, the funding that was available. So for next year, there's an increase of about eighteen thousand over this year, which will cover, like, COLAs and hopefully, cost of increase if we have an increase in utilities and things like that.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the program services contract, WIC local agency nutrition services.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid award of twenty twenty-four dash nineteen book preservation.
We bid out the book preservation for the Recorder's Office that Judy received a grant for. We had two vendors submit a response. Her recommendation is going to be to award it to Shutterfield Technologies for the thirty-five books, which is the twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. They aren't the lowest, but this is who Judy, we awarded it to last time. She got this grant last year, and she was really pleased with their services. So our recommendation is to go with Shutterfield.
They're just about twenty-three hundred more.
Yeah.
Twenty-three hundred more than the other vendor, which we've never really heard of before anyway. Do they have this?
That's a question. Does it come out of your regular budget or is it kind of like a record preservation?
This is coming out of record preservation. So we pay part and then a grant.
Oh, and you give a grant or a payment.
You said you had it separate, so it shows the in and out on the line item? Okay.
I don't know, there's some things that are on some bids and, you know, some bids. Things on one bid that are on the other and vice versa, so. I mean, they got first one data preparation, that's on the Shutterfield NA. And then on capital typing, they do have a price on there, I guess, just to have a price on there?
I thought that's what it was for, just to have a price. I did see that, that they had the one cent per unit on the capital typing, and Shutterfield does show the NA.
And then, then Shutterfield doesn't have a charge for travel, then?
No, they did not have one, no. And then the capital typing did.
Then the, the other, they, the other capital didn't have anything under other, so if they did have to do something, then it could be.
An additional price.
Or they just wouldn't do it, possibly, if, okay.
I think it makes the most sense just to stay with the people you've had doing this. They know.
And we know the images are good with them, so. And I do have a contract. I got it back like yesterday afternoon, so the contract is signed as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm good. I just had a couple of questions. They were close enough, and it's lowest and best, so. Are you good then? I'll make a motion to award and sign the book preservation bid twenty twenty-four dash nineteen to Shutterfield Technologies.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renewal two of unarmed security card contract.
And this is the second renewal with Vet Securing America for unarmed security guard services with the courts. We, when we bid this out, we asked for three-year pricing, and they have stuck to that schedule. Their price schedule, it did increase fifty thousand, or five thousand, twenty-three dollars and twenty cents, making their annual total one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. I spoke with Holly, who had spoke with Judge Beadham, and they were okay with sticking to the schedule. So our recommendation is to renew it for another year.
One or two of them do occasionally see me in the morning when I come in and ask me for a raise. And I say, well, you don't work for the county. You work for, what's it called?
Vet Securing America.
Vet Securing America. So. Ask you to?
All right, good then?
Yes.
Now I'll make a motion to sign the contract renewal for unarmed security guard services. Renewal number two with Veteran, Vet Securing America.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, signing of Republic Services contract.
And we have three contracts with Republic Services for two dumpsters that Public Works uses, and then one located at County Park. This is just a contract to, for them to continue to service. There's a four-yard dumpster at Public Works, and it was eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And it's decreasing to five hundred and forty-five dollars. There's a thirty-yard dumpster at Public Works, and it was three hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents, and it's decreasing to three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. And then there's a two-yard dumpster at County Parks, and the price is remaining the same at sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. I spoke with Eric about this, and he's okay with all the changes, and so I'm just needing contract signed. And this is a three-year contract term. There's three.
Three-year with two-year, two renewals? Can it cover that for three years?
It's, it's below the bid amount.
Okay, are you good with it?
I like the price, I think.
I think. All right, I make a motion to sign the Republic Service contracts for the three containers.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of food service at Springer Family Center.
We awarded this to SGC Food Services on July thirtieth, thirtieth, but we couldn't come to an agreement with our terms and conditions, and I had been working with Jill with, with this the past couple of weeks. So now we're just requesting to re-award it to Coal Wholesale, who Springer currently uses, and they're pleased with their services. We were saving with SGC, the savings was gonna be a little over four hundred dollars. And now with Coal Wholesale, it's gonna be one hundred and sixty-three dollars roughly of savings. We just couldn't come to an agreement with the terms, and I've been working with Jill and her attorney, and it just, we couldn't see eye to eye on it.
Make a motion to sign the food products for the Cook County Springer Family Center with Coal Wholesale.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfinished business. Discussion of EMS staffing.
Good morning.
Good morning. So if you remember, a couple of months back, I gave you a presentation on modifying our staffing plan with the addition of three nineteen Adam Street. We now have the ability to add another truck to the system. One of the options was to reconfigure the seven trucks that we currently have that would ultimately decrease the, the coverage for, for some part of the county. We're not sure which one, which area that would be. The other option would then be to staff an eighth truck, which would leave everybody in current position, but add another truck in, in the city. Currently, our staffing plan is seven ALS ambulances per day and one extra float EMT. In order to accomplish that eighth truck, we would have to hire three positions, leveraging that extra person we have now on each shift, assigning them to the truck along with the new position. In going back and looking at our utilization and some other things over the last couple of months, I've come to the conclusion that it's best to tiptoe into this. And with that, we would like to make that eighth truck basic life support or staffed with two EMTs as opposed to EMT paramedic. That will allow that truck to perform a lot of the routine work that we do on a day-to-day basis, taking patients from the hospital back to the nursing home, answering service calls or assist citizens, lift assists, things like that, other low-acuity emergencies, which would take the strain and load off of the, the rest of the system. Couple of factors driving that. We've seen, again, continued explosive call growth on pace to be up by about a thousand calls for service this year. The good news is, is that we are seeing that trend in, in the revenue side, because unfortunately, what we do is not free. So we, we feel the revenue side is healthy enough to support this change. And we do have a surplus of applicants for EMT positions at this time, so we do believe that we would be able to accomplish this and get them in place for the anticipated October thirtieth opening of the new station. It would probably require a budget amendment for our salary line, because we're trending pretty tight on that right now. So just want to be transparent on everything, and I think that's the major topics that I have, and happy to answer any questions.
So the budget adjustment is, is really sort of a fourth quarter adjustment for the modification of number of personnel?
Correct. And, and so there's a couple of options depending on how some of our other funds pay out. We are trending very high on medical supplies this year. We've seen some supplies take a two-hundred percent increase. Fuel is, is up, so there is a chance that we could cover that salary increase with just contingency funds that we already have built into our budget. There is a small chance that we would have to take some of the increased revenue to balance out that salary adjustment, which I'm assuming would, is the balance adjustment piece. If we stay within the contingency amount, we should be fine, no further action. But there might have to be a budget adjustment, depending on how soon we hire these folks and when they go into normal rotation.
Yeah, contingency is just sign those.
Right.
Move it from one category to another. If we gotta tap in additional revenue, we have to go through a court order procedure, so, yeah.
Currently, now, when you move a patient from the hospital or nursing home, or a nursing home back to the hospital, it's, it's staffed with an EMT and a paramedic?
Correct.
And this, looking forward, might be two EMTs if it's a low.
Yes. So, so, so the, an important piece of that is the reimbursement that we receive for performing that transport is at the basic level. So we are leveraging an advanced life support ambulance to perform these non-emergency functions. So it's, in, in terms, better utilization of resources, but also frees up the advanced-level providers to respond to the nine-one-one calls and the things in the system that only they can do. If the system were to be drawn down to where that is the last ambulance available, we have plenty of chief officers who are paramedics who can respond to that call and ultimately transport that patient and provide the same level of care.
Do, do you know if, when you get a slip and fall at, at a big box store, that it takes a paramedic? Or do you have an indication of how serious? that it takes a paramedic, or do you have an indication of how serious the, the call is?
Yeah, so that's something that we do, um, through our dispatch process. Anytime somebody calls nine-one-one, they go through the emergency, uh, medical dispatch questionnaire, and that algorithm produces a specific response code. If that response code is of a non-emergency nature, that BLS ambulance would be recommended for that call. And because those are non-emergent situations, um, they are sent, the ambulance will be centrally located at South Ridge, so they can respond to those non-emergency type calls throughout the county, not just in that primary response area.
Okay.
I think a BLS truck is gonna get a lot of the workout in a day.
Yes.
And, uh, the ambulance that was at MITA, that was just a BLS ambulance, they didn't have a paramedic, so. But I think, I think for a lot of our transfers and transports, I think, I think they'll stay busy.
And I think by, by accomplishing that, i- it, it's a six-figure savings by adding three EMTs as opposed to three paramedics when we get down into salary and some of the other things, uh, that, that are associated with our personnel costs.
So, what you've given us now is a capsulized version of your PowerPoint?
Yes.
From last Friday?
Yes, i- it's updated, kind of explains.
Okay.
Uh, even before your time, I was an advocate for the BLS ambulance, and even going a step farther and not having a full-sized ambulance that's fully loaded up, I think that's something we can consider in future.
That's why I had, or, we got that transit ambulance, which I thought was really neat, but, uh, our, one of our farmer chiefs did not think so, so we put a bath on that.
I think, o- one of the things that, that I would encourage is by having them in a full-size ambulance that is standardized to the fleet, it allows them to respond to all of the types of calls if the system is drawn down. The other piece of it is, we have fourteen total ambulances, we total, we staff seven daily, so that means we have seven in various reserve statuses. So, this would not result in any sort of equipment or, um, you know, vehicle cost. There's a little bit of maintenance, uh, probably from having that vehicle in frontline service, probably a little bit of a fuel increase, but, um, you realize that with, with increased revenue and some of those other sorts of things, so.
Uh, bottom line, I like the BLS, and I'd still like to look at getting a BLS ambulance, a, a smaller one that's more efficient, and it's just, it's not gonna be there for your frontline defense, so.
Well, and, and one of the other things that we could probably look at, um, is to have a modified ambulance, but, um, have it equipped with bariatric equipment. You know, i- i- there are certain number of calls per year where we go to where we have to call for, for mutual aid because our equipment is not rated to handle the weight of some of those patients. So, that would be a nice tool to have, and probably an effective use of a modified type of vehicle.
But for right now, we, we've got the ambulances, so we don't, we just need the pair, the EMTs.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's something during budget time we need to dig into as well, though, is the revenue coming in, because it's just, it's not just the EMTs, we've got ambulances, we've got all the other stuff to, the tools and things on the ambulance, so we need to keep an eye on it. I mean, we don't wanna work them to death.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think that is the, the other piece of the conversation, is that, um, the eighth ambulance is, is call-driven, so we have the call volume to easily support that at this point in time. If there comes a point where that call volume does trail off, that is certainly a conversation that, that we can have. You know, we have enough people who have career advancement and, um, you know, are, are on the entry level at that EMT spot that I think i- if there comes a time where, where we need to readjust back down, we can do so without really inconveniencing folks, if we can do it over a period of time, so.
Well, the conversations with you, I mean, we can, we can reduce some of our calls, but the way we would reduce it is the ones that bring us in the most revenue.
Correct.
Because we could get other agencies to help us with transfers, but then we're just stabbing ourselves in the foot there.
Correct.
So, we've had plenty of conversations on it, and bend each other's ears on it, it's, I appreciate the communication, so. I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm too, so.
Me too.
We just need to pay for them to come through, we don't have to have any kind of action today.
A- a- as long as you guys give me a direction that I can, can add three additional spots, then I think, I think we're good.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's try it out.
Okay.
Don't laugh till you read it.
Uh, we will keep moving ahead, new business?
Sam, hold, hold on a second.
Yes.
Under, it's really not unfinished business, but it is old business, uh, I'd like to- Last week, I made a couple of motions with respect to tax levies, and it, I was not as accurate as I should be, so this is just, it's almost restating, but it's more correctly stating the, the levy, levies for the two, uh, taxes we have here at the county. I, last week, I made a motion to adjust the general levy from point zero four eight-six to point zero four six-two. I'd like to make that motion again, but only insert, following the words, for two thousand twenty-four. Didn't put a, a year in there, so I'm making a motion to adjust the general levy for two, twenty twenty-four from point zero four eight-six to point zero four six-two.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Oh, it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sam, we had a, we had the public hearing, you know, we don't have to re, redo that, okay. On the other one, the road and bridge, I simply said a week ago what the new rate was, and didn't, did not list the old rate, and also didn't put the year of twenty twenty-four in it. So, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the levy for road and bridge for twenty twenty-four from point two-seven-seven-nine to point two-seven-eight-three.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, and, and thanks to, uh, Dawn for, uh, sort of catching that, too.
Good for her.
I'm gonna give her credit.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, new business, accounts payable review. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number eight.
This is for two hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. This is the, um, grant that the EMS department received for, um, this one's for- It's the ARPA one, yeah. I do need action today. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to implement court order number eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second and final reading of budget adjustment number nine.
This is twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, this is the law enforcement part of the ARPA grant. Not as much as they can ask for.
You didn't have to say that.
A little bit louder, please.
A motion to adopt court order number nine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of stand-up cooler at the Sheriff's Department.
Morning.
Morning.
I think, uh, I spoke to all three this morning about the pricing and stuff, uh, Sheriff Wheeler and also agree that it's a fourteen-year-old piece of equipment, runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it's worn out. Uh, I got a price off a state contracting for thirteen-
Thirteen-nine.
Thank you, to replace it, uh, that's the way we're recommending going.
So, we talked about that, well, Sheriff brought it up before, and then Greg brought it to us this morning, too, the existing one is fourteen years old. I just, I just feel like if we fix it, we're gonna be fixing something else next year on it, and it might just be time to quit putting bandages on it. Does this include delivery?
Delivery setup, yeah, I mean, disposal of the old one.
Disposal of the other one?
Yep.
Okay, is there no value to the other one, or are they considering letting it?
Do you want?
If you wanna keep it.
I, I'm just saying that you might be able to sell surplus and get something, sometimes it's not worth messing with it. People use them to make smokers out of, or whatever, there's different things out there, people still do recycle, reuse, so.
Yeah. You wanna surplus, we can surplus it, but I assume just get rid of it.
I don't even know exactly how big it is, it's, if it's worth messing with, it might be worth the money just to have them take it, so.
It's not really worth it, yeah.
I just wanna make sure included-
It does come with a seven-year warranty on compressor parts and labor, for seven years, so.
Good.
I'm good with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the stand-up cooler on state contract for thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Once I get the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I was just gonna say, once I get the, uh, uh, order, I'll do a PO and a transfer payout contingency.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Nothing else on our agenda?
Motion to stand in recess until four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.